Recording. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health and Townhouse Auditorium, December twentieth, twenty twenty one, six oh one P M. This meeting is being conducted in person and remotely using video conferencing technology as allowed under Governor Baker's order of March twenty twenty. Please stand with the flag.
United States of America, and we do it all, which is Sam's foundation, under God, in this little liberty.
Thank you. Is anyone recording the meeting other than us? None. On our agenda tonight, the, we have the superintendent who's going to take him a little bit out of order because he has another meeting, very busy at this time of year. And as always, and so we'll take him out of order, superintendent. And basically, can you give us an update on the North Road green metal traffic situation?
Absolutely. I'm going to have the people to my right and my left introduce themselves to each other as well, too.
Hi, good evening, I'm Gina Khan, and I work for the district and some of the health and safety programs support.
Okay, Ken, well, I'm former fire chief of Wilbraham, I left there when I was concrete, is there higher to some other work back in the area? And working with the district as doing their annual safety audit, and the superintendent asked me to consult on this project.
So we could just show you a little bit then our goals to sort of help the process in alleviating some of the traffic concerns that are happening. And certainly willing to get some advice from you guys as well, too, as this is certainly a community issue that we're addressing together. So one of the things I had a chance to talk to, actually Craig, and actually show him on Friday, when we walked a little bit around Green Meadows. As you might be aware, and somehow the story got a little larger than than what we were planning on doing, so I'm not sure how that's displaced. But you might be aware that there are two sort of, I'm going to refer to as bump outs, right along the line of the school. I think at one point they're put there for for a safety type of thing, although when I speak with Ken and when we speak to the custodians and the principals, and actually everyone else, it says they're not really sure that the purpose of being there at that time. And what they've done is actually slowed down a little bit of the process happening. So what we did this weekend was take those two out, and that will give us the opportunity to get some more cars into that school parking lot. Our goal is actually, there's a, there's a section of of the middle of that where teachers park as well, so we're going to try to move those teachers to both sides of the parking lot as well, too, and we looked at the spaces there, there's enough. So our goal will be to get double lane of cars off the road and into the parking lot of green metals. By taking those bumps out, they'll be able to have two lanes and have cars be able to flow in and out there. There's the logistics of working with parents and working with the staff, and I'm going to refer to that and work with Principal Moberg on that as well, too. There's a little bit of sense of urgency to do this for two reasons why, A, we know it's been a concern, it's been brought up multiple times. And also, we're trying to, trying to beat the weather, right? We want to get this out, take it out quick enough. Our goal is put some laptop down there as well, too, in the next week or so, if not, Edson Adello, our director for sews, will crush stone instead. This will be able to stop that, that process, maybe get double lane of cars in there and get them off North Road. I gotta just say one last thing, I think this has been an issue for a long period of time. I'm hoping this will help resolve it, looking to get some input from you guys. I have to say, and Ken can certainly attest this because he's been working with us, and this issue is, my number one thing is keeping the students safe at Green Meadows. The way that Principal Moberg and her staff do that right now, and making sure that every student gets the appropriate car, and if you ever get a chance to witness it, I know Craig, you see it every day. You know, you roll up and it's fifty four, is your number, and I'm making that up. They make sure that they're fifty fours, parents are in there, and they're double checking to make sure those kids are safe. I know it takes a little bit while, but all day long, I'd rather have the story saying it took us a little while longer, but we made sure we don't get home safe, and the kids are in the right cars with their families as well, too. So that's where we're at right now.
So the children exit through the cafeteria?
The children exit through the cafeteria.
So now you're not a double line, so some kids are going to be crossing a line of traffic?
Yeah, so that's what we're going to be working on, so Ken, you want to speak to a little bit more?
Uh, one of the things I did as a safety audit was to visit every school within the district and to observe dismissal as well as arrival time. This challenge is being faced at every occupied school building in the district. And every school building, the principal has crafted a solution. And many of them are experiencing the same backup of cars onto public ways. Two of the other ones in Wilbraham have the same situation. Two others have it backed up onto campus driveways, but it's not the school driveway per se. So they all are experiencing this overflow. Why? Parents aren't putting kids on buses, kids aren't walking. None of the campuses were designed to accommodate the volume of cars and the number of travel in drop offs that are being made on a routine basis. As the superintendent said, you now have the building is basically split split in two, where the school arrival and dismissal for buses is one part of the building, and then those by cars in another part of the building. That means at the facility level, they have to staff and have two processes, but more importantly, buses and cars entering and exiting a limited driveway at the same time needs to be managed and coordinated. So the fact that the schools have managed it for this long so successfully is a real testament to the work that they've done. To this issue specifically on the safety, there is another school in the district that does exactly that. They have a double wide roadway, they allow a double line of cars. They have a staff member at one end that closes, nobody can leave, they have one at the back end that shuts it off, nobody can enter. They coordinate the dismissal of the students, they arrive, they're escorted to their vehicle, they're in the vehicle, the door is shut, the staff accounts for that. The person at the back gives the okay to the person at the front, they open the queue, all of those cars leave at once, the queue is shut. They open the incoming end, a new queue of cars fills, it shuts, that's communicated, those students are brought. So when, to your question, when the queue is parked, there is no movement of vehicles, and there is eyes on the row of traffic and portable radio communication, so that it could be shut down, and it's tightly monitored. My sense is the same approach could work here. But it's a change, it's going to take some time, some planning and some testing to make sure it works the same here as it does as the other facilities.
We'd love to check with working with this Moberg, Principal Moberg as well, too, and the staff to figure out the best way to do this. The one thing that this will resolve right now is getting that, that those traffic, the cars off North Road, get more crap, cars off North Road into the parking lot, even if it's made, it's a double lane of them, and then they they channel into one lane as they're going right in front of the building, we might have to do that, but we, we gotta work that all out.
I see, I see ten to, and you may have seen the same, ten to fourteen cars on North Road. Are you now building that extra capacity queue that's designed here for those ten to fourteen?
That's what we believe.
Or you're just reducing?
Nope, we, we believe that we're going to be able to reduce, uh, we're going to be able to double the amount of cars that are normally in that parking lot lining up. We're hoping that we're going to be able to almost double that and take those off North Road. And please, this is, this is, we're trying for this, right? We, we gotta wait and work out, but this is a community effort, right? So my, my number one priority, like I said, is those kids and staff in, in our, on our school property. The help from North Road, whatever you guys, if you suggestions that you guys have or input you have to help this, I welcome those conversations.
When did the, is this, this valet parking service part of the pandemic?
It's not, it's not valet, if you ever happen to be in a school district where by God forbid, the wrong kid gets to the wrong bus or the wrong car, you don't want it, you don't want me ever to have that conversation with you. So it's really a safety protocol that we make sure that little John is getting in there, because sometimes little John's grandfather comes, or grandmother comes, and they write a note, and it changes all the time. It really is our number one priority is that safety of those kids getting on that.
Yeah, I think Don and I are from the age when this didn't happen like this before, right?
My, 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 I guess, I guess my, I don't.
Sure.
No, no, it's good. But I guess, I guess my question is, why are all the kids being picked up? Is it, is it pandemic generated?
Great question, we'd love your help with that, the community, right?
We don't know about the kids going to be on the bus with the pandemic or.
Back of sidewalks.
For too long, I mean, we always heard, and Don, you may recall this, we always got the notes, hey, my kid's on, he's getting picked up at six forty, and you know, because he's the last one on the list.
I think that was some of it. Based, as a parent's point of view, I mean, one, there's a safety concern because you can't have kids walking down streets without sidewalks. So more kids are going to drop them off when they would take a bus, rather than sitting on a bus for an extra forty five minutes, they're going to drop them off, which is makes it so convenient. Then you have a lot of parents who are working from home in this town, so they're going to do drop off and pick up no matter what. It's just peace of mind for the kid, they have a little bit of safety. Now, regardless of what happened in the past.
I, I'm just trying to, we had, when my kids, which was a hundred years ago, we had twice as many kids in the system and didn't have this problem. I just don't, I'm trying to figure out what, what psychology has changed to.
We have more students now, we have more students being dropped off and picked up by their parents in their cars than we've ever had. We, we, we try to say, take the bus, we provide transportation, we make our bus routes so that kids aren't even dropped off on the opposite side of the street. Our buses take a little while longer, so when they're opening up the door, they're on the same side, hopefully as, as their houses are on, so we're trying to do it.
I mean, I'm trying to be, I'm not trying to be insensitive to the problem, but I'm just trying to figure out how it evolved over the years.
I think it's just a generational thing, you know, it's not how it was done in the past, but that doesn't mean that's not how it's going to happen in the future.
And I think you told me one time that you're budgeting now, if you will, from a bussing standpoint, a hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty five percent capacity on the bus. Because you know you're never reaching that, you're lucky to get fifty percent of the possible kids on the bus.
But at all points, Craig, for example, I was trying to call you up, he could say at one point, I want my kid to take the bus today, right? So I have to make sure I have a spot for Craig on that, on that, on that bus. He might say Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'm picking him up, but I need a bus today, right? We have to make sure we're prepared for that, we always have to provide transportation.
Probably not calling you and telling you that, just sending him out with a card. All of a sudden the bus driver is like, who's that kid?
I think no matter what we do in that intersection over there, anything we do is going to be an improvement. And I like the double lane thing, I think that's going to work a lot. Currently in front of school, before you took out the bump outs, you were lucky to maybe get four cars there to get pickup. So if you're talking double lane, you take out those bump outs, you could fit sixteen cars there. So I see that. I, I am concerned, though, about the crossing over to the second row of cars. You know, somebody in the minivan across the second car doesn't see a kid crossing, they don't have their car on park, they're stepping on the brake, they let it off for a second because they turn around to buckle somebody in, and then now they're going forward. So that's a concern. As long as you guys can address those concerns, I'm okay. I'd rather see a single row of cars in front of the school, maybe eight to ten right there, because I think you could fit maybe eight to ten if you wrap around by the dumpster. And then double it up at that turn there where you took out that island. And if you double it up all the way through the parking lot there, you could fit twenty cars there.
Oh, and, and I appreciate what you're saying, and only because I know Sarah's here as well, too. So please understand, this is the start, we have a lot of work to do with Ms. Moberg and Ken Bellet working with Ms. Moberg, the principal of Green Meadows and the staff. So I don't want, you know, them to be hearing that we're going to do this, we got, we got to walk through this, and it's just a start to help us on that concerns we have on North Road as well.
How does this change your, your staff situation? People have to get paid extra, or?
I don't think it's going to add any time on, on to our, our, the amount of time teacher there. I might need to have hired maybe some additional support there, is that something you want to support us on?
Thanks, Alan.
I know I shouldn't ask that.
So.
Between crossing. Areas with the ball and the kid.
I, 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 you know, they might.
I know the teachers, you know, they've got a certain amount of things that they have to do every day at the end of school.
Absolutely.
If that's an additional thing, so maybe, I mean, yeah, if it's for the sake of the kids, I'm sure we'd have to.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have, we have the crossing guards we pay for a certain period of time that come down, and they, they walk the kids.
They cross right here, Craig, what they can say.
Right, so is that something that you either use maybe a vice principal for, to organize the cars, or would you need an extra crossing guard to organize?
You know what, I, I, I always hesitate even myself being in that role where principals assist the principal designate that one person to do that job every day because something comes up, and then they can't do it. And that's always when something will happen on the other end of it. So I, I always try to designate a person, but again, respectfully, I have, I have to work with Ms. Moberg to see exactly how she's going to work this all out. I might be coming back to you and saying I need a little financial help with this, because of this helping out the North Road, and maybe, you know, that's a conversation later on. But I gotta work with Ms. Moberg.
Yes, her school.
Yep, absolutely. And, and this is just a start, again, sense of urgency for time, you know, we're trying to beat the weather, and we also, you know, heard what, what the community's saying about North Road, so we're trying to help.
How long does the, because I know you have to go, how long does the congestion last?
Five minutes, five, ten minutes the most. It's, it's quick once she gets going, as, as Superintendent Head said, she's got it down. It's just, once it gets going, yes, parents and grandparents will never come bottleneck and wait, they want to be first in line, and that's what, that's what's hurting us. Once she gets it going, it's rather quick.
I understand, but that time, like you say, the flow starts at two whatever, but the line starts at two this time, yes.
It started two point.
But this appreciates, not the parents who are waiting, it's the people that have to go up North Road that are trying to go up North Road to do their work, so go up to. Right, so, so I used to be principal of a school, which was on Cineview and was on E. L., right? And it was for that twenty minutes, it was congestion, right? But it was all parents, and the mayor used to send out a connected message saying, basically, unless you're picking or dropping, you give up. But those twenty minutes, stay out of that community, right? And, and then do your business, because it's three o'clock, three oh four, well, we met at three o'clock, it was a ghost town, it was not a soul there. So it literally is that short window that's causing that congestion.
We've had the signage put up there.
I'd love that.
The, sent the letter out, it didn't work in the beginning, unfortunately, our signage is down right now, so we can't get out there. But Sharon has had the letter out there, and the, and the parents started doing really well?
She does send reminders out in her newsletters.
Don't assemble too early, basically.
That's exactly.
And the one last thing, I should people, you know, the whole bump out thing, I'm not really sure if people know what we're referring to, unless you're looking at the pictures, I've been at Green Meadows. But it's just cement areas that were coming out like sort of a half semicircle. I, I know our custodians were there, and as well as the plow guy who did the work said, he's thrilled, right? So now he could just do a clean cut for plowing, as opposed to doing these little half indents to do it as well, too. So no matter what happens with North Road, hopefully this is going to help, but it's going to help the improvement, I think, in the flow of traffic in our, in our.
Just one school, one personal school child transportation thing. I had one daughter, I was chairman of the school committee, the bus stopped in front of my house. There was not one day in five years she got out and made it to the bus in time. So I understand dropping them off.
So we're not cutting trees down, we're not moving in the major, this is, these are the two things we did, and like I said, we're just trying to beat the weather.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming in.
Thanks, I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ellen.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas to you guys as well, thanks, guys. Thank you.
All right. License and permit renewals. Why is the permit renewed?
Why?
License is for.
Well.
How are we doing?
I have mine organized by permit, I don't know what Jane has in there, all of which have to be signed by you.
Do we have a list of different kinds?
You have, you have mine.
No, I mean, not, okay. I think the easiest is like to say, we approve the licenses for the frozen dessert and ice cream mix per the list that submitted into the, uh, bed at the bureau office. And that makes sure they got the permissions and use the same language.
One.
But what we do have.
And then we get it the other time after that.
Okay.
I was talking like the food.
Yeah, yeah, the, the bacon and stuff like that.
I think that's how you wrote it there, right?
Mine are all identified, and I've got the language, this is the, this is information for you to look at, this is the liquor license. So if you, so the chief of giving his comments on anything that has happened during the year, you ask that up to the end, all right?
These are expiring in, in the December. What do we have that's unpaid? Everybody, everybody that's here is paid, and you're.
These that are highlighted?
Yeah.
I have in, but I hasn't yet, I don't have these, so.
She's in there twice.
Well, she's in two different lists.
No, in the one list, she was, it was just kind of, I think, but no, she's in the, she's in the food.
Yes.
In the, in the liquor.
Yeah, in the particular one.
Okay.
This is different, that's a difference.
This is used cars. Yeah, I, I try to have a list in front of you, and I don't see one. So you can do one motion, you can either say or not.
Okay.
And these have not come in yet, so unless they fulfill the requirements.
Is this in Florida?
No, that, he's not even on the list. Right, that's over.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the licenses for the year of twenty twenty two for food services established per the list that's submitted and vetted by the Selectmen's Office and Board of Health.
Second.
Fall in favor.
I'll sign it. Thirty five, I was going to pull thirty six out, I'm just going to double that.
I didn't sign it, one of it didn't pay yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right.
If they don't turn our check in.
Yeah. That's the wrong food, that's the wrong date, I think.
Chair, I make a motion to approve the license for frozen dessert and ice cream per the list that's submitted to the Board of Health or Selectmen's.
Second, all in favor?
Damn, that one had a date of twenty twenty.
The ones that Jane did, I don't have anything to do with.
Except the twelve.
Make a motion to approve the list of separate callers submitted by the Board of Health for the year of twenty twenty two.
Second.
Ensuring all fees and requisite, the licenses are paid.
Second, all in favor? Now we're down to. That's coming back.
Whatever. Make a motion to approve the common licenses for twenty twenty two, assuming all necessary fees and permits are paid.
Second.
All in favor? Well, we got.
Chair, I make a motion to approve the swimming pool license for Mercury Swim Institute for twenty twenty two.
Second.
The other.
Swimming pool, there isn't one for riders.
Now, here's a question.
I would for now.
I would for now.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the permit to operate a swimming pool for a great horse or a nation cartridge, pending all payments for the year twenty twenty two.
Second. Now we have. Okay, now we have.
We have a teacher speak. Now these were serving or sale.
This is for, you serve at the declaration. These are for.
They're called on premises ones, right, as opposed to.
Right, but these also include.
Drop on the premises.
Now, the only difference is restaurants have that three or four done, where the building inspector go and do inspection. And the only one that hasn't been done according to O B P is the V, and, but everybody else is, it's been done in the past.
We can approve the contingent on all.
Yes, I would let anything go.
Here, go to, you, our team, that you approve all submissions for these. Have been no complaints that would, that you would ask us to consider at this point?
The one that I submitted to you for the, the great horse that the.
Great horse, yeah.
The great horses we're talking about.
The wild lions.
It would have been an entertainment incident, and it would have been a guest that was.
This isn't the entertainment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, but he, I think he would put everything.
Put everything into one.
Yeah.
So the entertainment. I make a motion to approve the request for liquor licenses for the year of twenty twenty two, subject to all necessary inspections by police and fire and building inspector for Latina Mountain View, in this kind of lickers, Brog Shop, Gios, La Casabella, V F W, and those two more.
Go in favor.
You're here for great horse.
Entertainment, right?
Entertainment.
Mister Chairman, I move that the liquor license for twenty twenty two be approved as presented for the great horse granted upon all necessary approvals. Second, for the year twenty twenty.
Second, all in favor? All right, do we have the entertainment license?
No, the only one I've received is from Casabella, and I imagine we'll be getting in the others. I did have a folder that shows you what they have had in the past.
This is the license. So the only one who sent it in is Casabella?
Well, so far, I mean, they haven't had them that long, quite honestly.
Did anybody ask for a Sunday? That's where, that's where you have to bet the Sunday one, okay? You know, each one, that first day, or something, that's the separate.
But I guess the question is, because people have been concerned about great horse and noise, et cetera, that, I mean, you can't hold the hearing or you can just grant approvals, but.
They haven't submitted any.
No, exactly, they haven't. No, I mean, I'm assuming they're going to come in and say they want to accept what they have, but I just didn't want people to not feel their voices could be heard.
Because last year was done, you recall, such a thing to be extended of.
Outdoor stuff, so, but when I get everybody here.
We'll do it.
Do you want everybody to come in, or do you want to just?
Um, it is, now, here's the thing, it is going to end the year, would you say that, would like you, let's set one date at the beginning of January, let's have everybody.
When are their licenses currently in?
Right.
What for the entertainment?
Well, here's the thing, technically, their current licenses expire the day first. I would say I'm going to extend everybody from a period of two weeks after the first, so we can have a meeting and bringing everybody.
January first, they'll have New Year's Eve.
At that point, it'd be like a whole one.
So I can send them an email and say you're good for another two weeks, please come in.
We must see you on January such and such, right?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, all right.
We got a vote, vote on that?
Yeah.
So Chairman, I'll make a motion to extend current entertainment licenses for two weeks into the twenty twenty two coming here.
Second.
I want to add on, I want to add on that you would like to have the entertainment license applicants come in.
Do, 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 do the motion without great horse.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll vote to extend the. Mister Chairman, I'll vote to extend the entertainment license two weeks into two thousand and twenty-two for Lacina, GIOs and Casabella.
And their Sunday license. Chief, are you good with extending their Sunday license for extra Sunday or so?
Yes.
Okay.
Including Sunday license?
Yeah, because that needs that.
For two weeks, which will need further approval.
Right.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, now you're gonna do these guys.
Mister Chairman, I will vote to move that the board grant a two-week extension to great horse for entertainment license into two thousand and twenty-two. Includes some.
Sunday, okay, great horse?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
That's it.
So they're all gonna come January third. So we can talk this. He was paralyzed. How are we doing there?
Well. Everything.
They got any talos, chief? I've been walking. Ready?
As I had mentioned to you.
So this person, this person, the one you're concerned or concerned about is this person lives in Florida.
Yes.
He's got a Wilberham address. I think he's up here six months, six months down here, six months here.
This, I started to fill this out because he walked in with no paperwork, and I said Jane's had to do a court, and she said I pulled out a Florida license.
Right.
I said, oh, so you're in Florida. Well. Six months here, my son in Belcher Town. But he is one of two. McMahon, we we have permitted forever, but he lived in town. His son took over. And his son was in Summers, Connecticut. And he he rents a place in Casabella's.
Office.
Area, yeah. So he has a permit, but I thought out of state might just be a bit much for.
Was this the one at the hardware store?
No, 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 no. Those guys are.
They're gone.
They're gone. They're gone.
So he said Casabella.
No, Bobby Reed is on commercial.
Commercial drive for everybody, okay.
Well, I know the guy in Casabella doesn't have cars on property.
Correct.
It's all interest.
He just has it on.
I don't think Reed has cars on property either.
I think yes.
Who's the one next door that he runs that from? That lives up here. You got Reed, who wants to know? Because I don't see many cars there. I know there was doing some auto there, but I haven't seen cars for sale there. You got DJ out of order in the front, you got a DJ, you got.
He's coming in for a license for someone.
Do you have a license ready for him? Because I know the standing board approved some of these that have cars on premise and some of them without cars on premise.
I can go.
What does his past license say for certification?
Go.
This is, well, this, this is twenty, this is twenty-six. This is, doesn't have, doesn't say how many can have it. This one's limited to thirty.
I mean, I can go down and get it out of the office.
I'm thinking they're thinking the sales are online, and then they're being delivered to that address and then shipped from that address. Which which guy? Reed.
Reed.
On commercial drive.
But, I mean, he's out of state.
Six.
I don't. Look, I don't recall that guy at all.
You don't.
I remember the guy who was in the cellar, and we had a couple of guys who were internet-only, which was fine.
Right.
And then who's the guy on Main Street? He was like, we wanted two, three cars.
Oh, they were up in, they were up in.
No, no, the. The guy at.
Jeff. Oh, he's still.
Yeah.
He's still. He's got his own.
We had talked and stopped parking them on Steep of view and that type of thing.
That went really far.
So. The man is.
McMahon's father started the business, and he was in town for many years. I think Raymond Drive maybe. And he's now out of the business, and his son has taken over. But his son has a Summers, Connecticut address, but he leases from Kennedy or whomever owns that now. Does Mike own it? Mike Connors?
Oh, so we actually.
He owns an office space.
Oh. Okay.
See the store.
But he does not have cars on site.
Oh, well, that's typical, isn't it? The two guys that were in the him and hardware building, and they also just.
Same thing.
Office space there.
No, they had to have space out in the parking lot.
Right, I mean, they had to have a sign showing this is their space, this is their space. So if he wants to do that, he'll have to get a space at Casabella as well.
Right, and he doesn't intend to.
Who's he? Who we talking about now?
The guy at Casabella who is McMahon.
Doesn't intend to get space?
Correct.
So what's the space he has now?
He has office space.
Okay, then strictly internet sales only, but no cars coming outside.
Right.
I'm just bringing this to your attention.
It's a good point, and I think.
Argument.
He's not gonna abide by that part, that you don't get this. Or we could just say maybe it's a business that's. Where's the typical occupation?
Not.
Well, you. You know what happens and has happened in the past, because people can't get used car licenses anywhere else but here.
I know.
So everybody was coming in and getting licenses. And now we have a guy who lives in Florida who has a license. That just seems, I don't know.
If he's a, if he's running an office in, it doesn't matter where he lives, he's in an office.
Yeah, any business person can live anywhere and then facilitate a business.
Or you have to see some proof that that office is real there.
Right. I don't see what.
Such as a mailbox.
There isn't one, there isn't one there, because I figured you guys were discussing. I mean, I can go down and look and pull his permit.
And I think the license would be contingent on, you know, I'm like, okay, here's the thing, so I need to end my lease with Casabella and, well, now I'm good. The license runs concurrent with your proof of operation in this building.
Right, we'll assume the business license would be tied to physical location. An address.
Used car one right now, they may be tough to like keep track of all the time.
All the other ones, right, are have addresses listed correct? So I feel if we operate a license, they need to have a physical address.
I agree, I'm just saying, and they put the bond up as well.
Yeah.
Well, McMahon's got Casabella.
Yes.
And this, the Florida guy has got.
On commercial.
As long as the business license is tied to an address in town.
What this is on commercial, where is he in commercial?
Thirty-one commercial good.
And I don't know where that hits. I don't know. What's DJs? Is DJs in there?
Peter's on the other thirty-one. It's right. That's before. Right, there's more hand and trading company on the left-hand side there. Just before.
Yeah.
Right across you, no curb, but it's right. There's a building there. The gentleman, he lives in. So one of them on the left-hand side. He has to send somebody. There's always all the bills, business areas, always have hours there. So he, I think he rents office space to read. Well, let's be Ferrara, that was.
Ferrari.
That's what it is. So he's subletting for this?
I believe so, yes.
For hours, thirty-nine commercial drive. For hours, twenty-nine commercial drive. Yeah. It's not over thirty-three.
So Reed is, Reed has actually got a number that in that building.
But is there, there's a physical building, or he's part of the same building?
Part of the same building.
Physical.
So that goes back to, I would kick it back, I'd say it to the building inspector slash planning board. They issued, if you will, a permit for X number of cars at that thing. Now you sublet, this guy gets so many cars, what does that take away from the other number if you all, it's almost like parking space.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'd like to verify that their total number doesn't exceed the original permit for that operation.
So would that go for all, all three of them down there? We got the twenty-nine, thirty-three, and thirty-one?
If they're subusing the same building.
Right.
Yes, if they're separate buildings.
That's loud, he's got his own building.
He's always got his own building separate. Now, is there anything for Ferrari there?
Yeah, it's that's twenty-nine commercial drive.
It's interesting, because they're in the same building, Reed's right there.
Alright, so we gotta check these out.
Hey, I would just kick this to Obie and ask him for his verification of these are in accordance with special permits that were issued.
Just those two, correct? Or are you talking about just the one?
I would say the commercial drive. In all, all the commercial drives that we're not, whatever, just make DJ, whatever. I'm pretty confident DJ, but everybody's, you know, helped the same here. And he's been there for a number of years. He's been good out there.
We have motion.
No motion, just for kicking it back to.
What about the others? Look at DJs.
DJ's on commercial, so.
So we're gonna do, so we're gonna check out Ferraro, DJs, and Eddings.
Yeah.
Everybody else.
And anybody on, anybody showing commercial, you know, show that they're a viable address within the special permit that was issued for their operation.
So this one here is on Wenson Road.
Oh, that's not, is that North Wenson?
This is North Wenson.
That's Herb Smith's old place. Eighty-six, I mean, eighty-eight Smith plays.
Fresh Road.
It actually is the business.
Fresh Road, fifty-two. Fifty-two Main Street, five forty-six Main Street.
Is that the?
Peter McMahon, Max.
I think six, that's Casabella.
Yes. Two oh three North Wenson Road.
Businesses.
Yeah.
That's the businesses.
Two twenty-four Main Street, that's the. And twenty Commercial Drive.
Make a motion to approve the licenses subject to all bonding and license verification by our board for the permits as the Mr. President Chair.
Second. All in favor? Peter, send the whole we.
Ask for Obie to check the planning, etc., for all necessary.
Okay. Alright. What do you think?
I'll sign it.
COVID protocol review.
Harry, Bob and I both had a chance, and unfortunately Al's not here. Now, did you have a chance to watch the school community meeting tonight?
No.
I thought the nurse gave a pretty good recap, that they had seen a spike, but it was a spike that was, to be honest, expected after Thanksgiving. And the same thing, I think Bob also heard in the shared service meeting this afternoon, that none of the towns in our group, if you will.
Right.
Are looking to do anything at this point. Again, let's monitor the situation. We're seeing the numbers, I don't say where we expect them to be, but not in an imminent danger mode at this point.
Yeah, we're at twenty-eight this past week.
Twenty-eight last week.
Twenty-eight, yes, the same number this week as last week.
Yeah.
Report this morning from Jane. One was vaccinated. The others are unvaccinated. No, it's. One was boosted.
Boosted.
So, I mean, it doesn't seem as though we are in crisis mode here.
Well, we're at seven percent positivity.
Yeah.
And and my, the reason I put it out, my concern is that we're, you know, you're getting, you're gonna get a break from school. So I asked Ellen, we are at the library, is it busy or was she, that was going on next, ask. And I asked Rebecca also what they had going on there, you know, when they have a pitch, pitch tournament, I think there's fifty people. I assume all her people that go there are backstabbing, probably boosted by now. But I think we want it to be a little bit ahead of the game to see what happens here, so.
My, my thought would be.
Westfield, I know, West Springfield, I know, is closing the town hall and the library all next week.
Okay, West Springfield did such a bang-up job with their mask policy of the big E, where you didn't see a mask in sight when they enter, so we'll see how they do with this new one.
And I think what worked well for the town was when we had a receptionist here. And residents could come and do business with the town but not be allowed down into the offices. I mean, I think it's, there's two parts of this, I mean, that people talk about. Number one, personal freedom. It's my freedom to decide what I want to do in terms of vaccination. There's a second part, though, and that is the health of people around you. And and to some extent, I think that's what we have to worry about here in the building, is that protecting the health of our employees. And so if this situation continues to deteriorate, my recommendation would be to bring back the receptionist, which I think worked very well. People could come into the building if they needed to do business with a department head or municipal department, they could come. The department head would come upstairs. We had the plexiglass all set up, and they could, they could do their business here without, you know, entering the town offices and perhaps jeopardizing. Personally, I think the receptionist helps all the time, even without COVID. I think it helps direct people to a proper location, gives a better quality of service. Yeah, that's true. That's true, but, you know, I'm not convinced. I mean, I had a long talk with Jane this morning, and 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 as John pointed out, we we talked with surrounding communities today with the shared health, the Zoom call, and they're not taking action at this point, so.
I mean, just so, we have, we have three options, to take no action and keep monitoring, you know, do a mask mandate, or. Oh, there is a.
At this point, I don't see a.
Could I ask a quick question?
May.
Hi, it's Ellen from the library. Um, I had forgotten about Kate was planning an event for tomorrow. The little kids were gonna go to the offices downstairs and do Christmas carols and get little treats and things. So I was talking to Jane against it. I said, what about if we do it outside or in the auditorium and if everyone spoke? It was similar to what she does at Halloween, except this time they like kind of sing Christmas carols and stuff, so we don't know. No one called, emailed to cancel their participation. Not sure how many people are participating. I'm guessing between twelve and fifteen, that's usually the number. And people, you know, I, I think they are self-selecting to want to attend the event, but also we just want to be careful, and I was just wondering if you had any recommendations about that? Should do it outside or maybe in the auditorium? But probably not go downstairs at all to the individual offices, I imagine, or not have it at all.
Well, people are self-selecting, so I think I do it in the auditorium, you know.
In just a few conversations today, that seems to be consensus.
I think. That's good. And and I think, I think, I think we just wanna all be very conscious about getting a booster shot, very conscious, and, you know, and and not be afraid to say, look, I'm not gonna go to this program or do that, you know, so.
Exactly.
So, but I didn't want to bring it up.
Alright, so that sounds good, the auditorium, and we can just have everyone spread out. We have a bunch of hula hoops. We can space them six feet apart and just make it kind of quick, and hopefully, you know, that'll work for everyone.
Alright.
Thank you.
And Rebecca, how do you feel about your people for your pitch, was it pitch tournament?
Um, I, you know, I, I have felt pretty good thus far. I mean, we know that the bulk of our population is vaccinated, not that that certainly matters to the new variant. So, uh, you know, I don't know. I, it's, we are, you know, obviously recommending masks for, for people, but the ninety-eight percent of people are not mad into the building. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure at this point.
But don't you think they would also make their own decision? I mean, they would, you know, as they watch TV and order all the news and probably decide, right? Although, I know those pitch players are pretty.
They'll, they'll be there. But yes, I mean, we have definitely had people who, you know, are choosing to stay home, or they're choosing to be mad. They'll, they'll be there, but yes, I mean, we have definitely had people who, you know, are choosing to stay home or they're choosing to be masked. Or they're choosing, um, you know, to sit socially distanced from other people, so people are definitely. Making those choices on their own, um, so.
The drive-by, the drive-by, uh, lunches?
Yes, lunch is still curbside and it will be, uh, definitely through the month of January at this point.
And Greater Springfield senior services, they haven't made any kind of particular reputation about programs.
Um, not about programming, no, they only oversee the meal site program. And they're saying definitely not until at least February would it come back in. Um, it's, you know, the Mass Association of Councils on Aging is staying pretty neutral and saying that it is the. Each town or each municipality's decision whether or not to impose a mandate or, um, anything like that at this point.
Alright, well, I guess we'll just continue as we are until we get more information.
I had a booster on Wednesday night and I was out Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Which one did you have?
Modern. And I'm convinced it because I had COVID.
But you're here.
But I'm here, that's right.
Alright, thank you, everyone, so. Right, uh, police cell phone policy, did you have a chance to look at it?
Yeah, I saw your corrections there, I think.
So, Mr. Chairman, there was two actually that was sent to you, like, there was one that was sent to you with, um, all the, after all the corrections after our last meeting. Then there was another one sent to you where I had, uh, gave you a present, a review, and it was a change of number nine that you put in. So I'm not sure if you got to see that. But, uh, the original one that I sent to you was, uh, changed to me, it talked about, we agreed to, leave it alone. Uh, there was one issue that came up, with number nine, it was a concern. Where, uh, there's no obligation, the last sentence of number nine was, there was no obligation to have. Department-issued cellular phones turned on while off duty unless officers use, choose to use a department cellular phone for all communications. So the concern was when they fill shifts, sometimes at home, um, where they can use their personal phone or where they can use a department phone. But I went back to under use of mobile phones, number one. It basically blankly says cellular phones may be used in off-duty capacity only for the conduct of police-related business or during departmentally managed off-duty law enforcement assignments. So I would think that being at home with your off-duty cellphone in the apartment, they could use it to fill shifts. So I was okay with leaving it, but that was a concern that the sergeant had, so that's why he changed up number nine. We can go back to what we had, if you wish, and leave alone with that or, or not.
So there is no obligation of the phone turned on while off duty? So they're saying that they wanna turn, if they turn their phones off, and they have to take a fill of detail.
Could they use a personal phone at home, then they can use a personal phone, but then they have the work phone, which number one says cellular phones may be used in an off-duty capacity. To conduct police businesses, so they can technically use it at home.
People splitting hairs.
We are, exactly, exactly.
So the person that's calling could tell them, hey, I need a shift bill, knows I'm gonna call you, the personal number or the department number first or?
Should be, should be, if they're at home, if they're at home, it should be their personal phone. So I can take that last line out basically and, uh, that we have and that's, obviously, there's no obligation to leave it. Turned on at home, and just leave that first line that we have, it says that they have a right to use their off-duty phone at home if need be. It's, it's, it's lessened and it's gonna be even more or less as we lose our part-time officers. Um, because those are the only ones that we had said at the beginning would be probably most likely to be contacting the fellow shift. So, I think it's a major issue, that was the only area that came into play, so we can go back to the first one that I'd sent you, Mr. Chairman. Which you would agree upon, the whole board was a part of it.
I know, um, I talked to Officer Meany about officers concerned about carrying two cell phones on duty. Because how are they gonna take their personal calls if they have to take a family emergency? And I, and I know there was language in there about not using the work phone for personal use, but I think in instances like that. You know, giving that number out to family would be an important factor if they can't have their personal device. There's also the, the sense of call forwarding, star seven two, I think it is, they can just forward their number for, for a shift with two, three buttons. So, uh, that's just a recommendation, it's not, you know, forbidden to the law.
It is, it's what you guys wish. It does say that they can use their family personally, I, I think what you had covered, your last document covered it all, it did say that. But you're right, there was, it wasn't concerned about carrying the two personal phones, and then there was concern with that last line saying. Uh, if, if I'm at home, I'm not gonna be turned on, now you are turned on, so.
Yeah, I just, it, again, that's splitting hairs, really, oh, I'm not gonna use it at home, I'm gonna turn it off, but, you know. I don't have a problem with using it for whatever they need to, for work or that function.
For the most part, I think we understood that the last meeting was that personally use that, their phone was the way to be in this dark, which we took it all.
Well, I'm okay with your recommendations.
Physical fitness, this is a work in progress.
Uh, so this is a work in progress. I, I did start a policy, uh, for, for your review, I think I sent it off to the board members. I know the, uh, PAT was what was suggested in the language of the contract. Equal to the PAT, PAT testing is the initial hire testing. So another initial hiring testing is the Cooper standards. The PAT falls in line with an obstacle course, stairs and a few different things included. I, I checked with a couple other agencies who do physical fitness standing, uh, standards. And, uh, the Cooper standards, what they fall into, which is basically a one-minute push-ups, one-minute sit-ups. A mile, point five walk run, and they also help incorporate the three hundred meter run. Or you just pick out of those four, three that you wanna do. I started the policy with three of them, the one-minute push-up, one-minute sit-up and a mile and a half walk and run. Uh, which I thought would be comparison, it's a volunteer basis, it's a day for a day. So they're coming in an off-duty capacity to this test, uh, and they pass those three tests, they get another day off to be used. I don't know if we're gonna get a lot of, uh, participation, to be honest with you. It's a day for a day, some agencies have, have a payout that they've done, uh, we chose to do the voluntary day for day, which is, is the language. But I think, um, the initial test that we're dealing with, I, I would like it to, I would like it to go to the one-minute push-up. One-minute sit-up in a mile and a half walk and run, could add to the, uh, three hundred meters, and we could just pick one of those three, or we could do all four. Um, just looking for some suggestions of where you guys kinda wanted to go with the language you're talking about.
I think the overall expectation of the fitness policy was just to kinda, kinda promote a healthy lifestyle, you know. For the workforce department, not just physically, but also mentally and emotionally, because, you know, if you're, you're healthy body, healthy mind.
And, and you're well in, in means with where our police reform is going with wellness and that police officer on the beat and just wellness in general. Uh, and that's where it's going that way. I haven't seen a lot of gearing towards actual physical fitness standards like this. These are all initial, initial standards for getting to the police academy, become a full-time officer, then after that, um, they've done more of, of, like you said, nutrition. Going over to the gym and having a workout set for these officers and stuff like that, off duty, but bigger agencies.
I know my wife at Mass Mutual, they wear their, their fitness watches, so they'll do challenges, you know, so many steps a day.
Right.
So maybe we're looking too deep into one-mile runs, sit-ups, stuff like that. Maybe we can facilitate some type of challenge where, you know, they, you know, do so many steps a day. It equals, you know, one checkbox or something similar to that, you know, for.
The, the only concern I have is the language that we incorporated already in the contract, it's already been signed. Specifically says, physical fitness standards, they get a day twice a year for following the PAT. Or people who are greater.
Right.
Greater would be the Cooper standards, which is the one-minute. So that was.
Do all of these things?
Excuse me?
You have to do all of these things?
Yes. I mean, you know, it. I hear what you're saying, I just was just kind of looking to where we were looking to go with it, I, I, I know what you're saying now, correct? But that, that's the language I was putting in the contract, I was just going off the mark.
Well, I don't think it's unreasonable, I get this question a lot in town for nine years. They, there are the guys in shape, we're now incentivizing, incentivizing them to do that. Two free days, two, two paid hours, two paid days, you know, for a, an activity thing, to be honest. I don't think it's that strenuous.
I mean, this activity would be, would be actually rated, be rated by itself, or maybe coordination with our health. Nurse that we have, you'd probably have to go over to Minute Shod and, and utilize. Uh, I think some of the squabble I'm already getting the feedback is, is I gotta go on my day off, you're right. Um, and you're gonna get a day for it, you're right, but it's voluntarily, if you want, um. So.
So if they're going on their day off, they're not losing a day at work, they're not giving up a day, they're, they're still gaining a day.
They would gain a day if they pass.
Okay, and we're talking, okay, one-minute push-ups, one-minute sit-ups and a mile and a half walk and run, which should be about, you know.
Seventeen minutes.
Right, so you're not losing a day, you're losing less than half an hour to gain. And you have to do this twice.
Push-ups, is there any requirement?
Yes, there are requirements here for, for the age groups. Right, so you split the twenty minutes and you get a free day's pay.
I take it.
Why you?
Why not?
Bob, you ready? How many sit-ups can you do, Bob?
I can do that, I can do the, uh, the Cooper aerobics.
I mean, and, and, you know, it does fall under the thirtieth percentile too, which is, which is low for your initial hiring. I mean, you know, uh, so the thirtieth percentile, which we're gonna fall under, isn't that bad? And this, you know, we do it twice, maybe we do it in April and in October. You know, uh, see who goes for it, after that, maybe next contract, something changes for the better of it. Uh, one of the concerns, I think I fall under was, obviously, the part of the department's part, department activity. Somebody gets injured, they fall under our injured on duty technical policy. So, um, that was one thing that I, that I thought about, but, uh, they are doing something as part of the department.
I have to say, Scott, that the woman that, uh, works for the Scenic Valley Health Trust, she's a wellness coordinator. I mean, she might be able to come up with something that would be engaging, a challenge of some sort that they might. Maybe if they participated in that and felt a little healthier or a little.
And I think Pam has heard this for a number of years. People expect the police officer to be in some reasonable, decent physical shape. You know, and they didn't wanna be in this, like I said, we're making it, I wanna say worth their while. But it's pretty, pretty generous and pretty easy.
I mean, it's not like you're just gonna, I don't, I mean, they, they've gotta go ahead and obviously get medical treatment by the doctors. And that's, I mean, they've gotta, you, you've gotta go ahead and, it's just not gonna walk into a run, you know as well as I know. I don't see anybody just walking into this, to this run or, or the sit-ups, to be honest with you. There, with the time.
Okay, well, I have to, it's just me. If these are our cops, I would hope they can perform this list here.
Well, I mean, it's a thirty percentile, again, we're, but I mean, I'm just saying, these are things that. Not everybody has to follow those fitness standards anymore, this is their initial hire, this is what I'm, what I'm trying to say, so. You know, majority guys aren't doing it, majority guys are, probably aren't walking on a regular basis, I would hope they're trying to keep themselves in shape for some life, but.
So, in, in the language, I know you're, you're, you were harping on the language that we already wrote. Has to follow the PAT standards, is that how we wrote it?
That's how you, we had said PAT equal or greater. So the PAT is an obstacle course that we had, that, that basically is under the initial hire, where they do the stairs, they do the handcuffing, a dummy drag.
And did you say PAT was going away though?
That's for our reserve officers for the testing for the bridge, that, that, that went away for that.
Yeah.
Uh, not for the, um, actual full-time academy, so we went, so the next step would be the Cooper. I mean, it's language that's signed in the contract already, is it something we could change towards a wellness like Pam's saying, or like you had said?
Fitness challenges of some sort, you know, people have.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah, not sure. Encouraging, yeah, yeah.
You see a physical fitness thing, it's all of us are expected to maintain good physical condition. But gee, the odds are encouraged, instead of should, change to encourage, participate in a voluntary physical fitness test twice a year. The capacity to get the extra personal data off, that must be used in this case.
Yeah, the should.
Did you wanna leave just the three we have here, or did you wanna add the three hundred meter too, or just leave the three we have?
I would take the three hundred meter out, cause that's more of a, a run sprint.
Right, where this is a walk.
This is, you know, encouraging some type of activity, not a sprint where you're gonna pull a hand.
Sure, okay, that's fine. So for the most part, I'll leave it the way it is, rather than taking out that, uh.
Alright.
We're okay to prove this?
Yeah, I think so.
Motion to approve the physical fitness with the.
We either approve the cell phone policy too, or is that still a work in progress?
That's pretty much, pretty much all said. Following, unless you wanna see it again, I can.
Uh, move to, uh, approve the cell phone policy as presented by the chief.
Alright, employee handbook review. I started out just to incorporate the new, uh, health insurance standard into the, uh, handbook. But also, uh, in going through it, I decided it needs some other changes, so you can see some redlined areas. Some of it is just, uh. Spelling, grammar and so forth, small stuff, however, if you turn to page fifteen. Uh, and look at page seventeen, I think we have some issues. Page fifteen, uh, item C, hours of work. The standard work week for most administrative staff consists of eight, uh, of eight hours per day. Four thirty AM to four thirty, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Monday through Friday, five days per week. Uh, forty hours, so that is not the case right now. Uh, and then we have, if you look over on. Page seventeen, lunch periods. The town of Hampden provides a daily unpaid lunch period, scheduled by the supervisor and determined by the needs of that office or department. Lunch periods are staggered, et cetera, et cetera, but, uh. Eight thirty to four thirty is eight hours. And there's no provision for lunch there. Uh, I think many, if not most, just have something at their desk.
Yeah, but I think you go back to Bob, how many employees, town hall, are forty-hour employees?
None.
Right, so the work week thing is.
Yeah, that's, that has to be updated, I just, yeah, before doing it, I just wanted to pass it by the selectmen.
But we do have employees that work five days.
Right.
Yeah, right, so they're, they're still not classified forty hours, they don't work forty hours?
I can't think of, maybe, maybe.
How many hours does Kathy work, Scott?
Eight to, eight to two, six.
Police administrator work five days? Police administrator.
Which would be our clerks are working.
Wayne used to tell me to come in at half an hour early.
Five days. Twelve employees work, five days, I mean, you go, boom, I went.
Oh, yeah, but they're. Still not thirty hours, so.
Um, I don't know what the schedule is, that way, I just know.
Alright, so Bob, you're working on cleaning up the handbook?
Well, I could certainly make it four days.
I wouldn't, there are people that work five. You have the library that's open five days a week, and you know, you know, you have the seniors now that's working five days a week. Police station is open six days a week as well.
Well, the other reason why I left this as is, was that there was.
Well, the other reason why I left this as is, was that there was some talk on the board of selectmen about going to five days.
As well.
I wasn't sure.
Well, we work twenty-four seven, unless you don't need a select.
So, I mean, I guess that's the elephant in the room. Do we, does the townhouse go back to five days a week?
I think that's, some departments have, I mean, pretty tough to kick Jane and Eva out of here. But I think it's something for us to discuss when we give our budget.
And the other question would be, how do we fit lunches into this pack, into this picture? Because it says an unpaid lunch.
Yeah, eight to four thirty. So eight thirty to four thirty.
I think go back to the hour. The lunchtime, same thing. You know, I have salaried people, and one just, just kinda like built into the salary.
That's not how it's written.
I think it'd be hard pressed to find too many people who don't sit at their desk and eat their lunch.
Right, so they're eating their lunch at their desk, right? So that's.
But even when you eat your lunch at your desk, you're being paid, presumably. If it's an eight-hour day, eight thirty to four thirty, that's eight hours, and this provision for an unpaid lunch doesn't fit.
No, but I, you bring up a good point, but I think the more valid point we should look at is the hours of the Town Hall, and then make the other part fit to that. And then go back to Craig's point here. Are we at the point, and Bob, you mentioned before, it's tough to get everything done. I think it's time for the selectmen to decide, are we providing good service to the town with only remaining at four days a week? And that's something I think our board should adjust in the upcoming months. You agree?
Yep.
And then we'll tool the work part to fit what we decide in the next.
I wasn't expecting any action on this tonight, just to give you the red line copy to let you review, and then you can take some action later on. All right. We're way behind schedule here. So we got expiring contracts coming up, just, this is just on here, just to put on our radar screen. Town administrator, highway superintendent, highway union. Here are copies. I'd like to get it done. I'd like to get it done before town meeting.
Yes.
Do you have copies for us, or one drive copies are fine?
I do have copies.
Okay, great.
Department. Here's the three wardens.
Administrators. And highway superintendent. These are also on the one drive. Do you have something to read or Christmas holidays?
Yeah.
But I have to say, that would, I joke about the content, but consistency in contracts would be.
All right, there are other things we gotta get done before town meeting. Streetlights.
Yeah, do you have, you, your list, you should have two lists.
Yeah, I saw that. I know we have a more updated list than the twenty fifteen one, because we've been sending them to you. Yeah, so, but either way, I think we have, you and I had, was it Pam?
Yes.
Okay, Hill from, okay, I thought we gave her that list that Tower Net provided us. We got a quote on that, and she said it was roughly twenty bucks a year per light, is what the email it said backwards.
Yeah.
And we were able to fit the fifteen or so he picked, and then we have the new request for, is it the cul-de-sac, Scotty, or the?
It's that.
I, I can't see doing the entire road, but I'm trying to pick up the intersection.
Right. I know, I just had the option go around last night, again. He was picked up, he picked up on the east side of town, Glendale North, once and South, once and Scannick Road was a concern, so where we could use definitely street lighting, if, depending on how many street lights we have or where we wanna go. The intersection of Fresher Road, Scannick Road was a concern of his, Summers Road. I just noticed this one's out right here. I came in tonight, that one's out. He had given me a list of.
Here's the thing, that's been out for two months, and we used to get a report from your guys of lights that were out in town.
Right, and they've started again.
So we started that three months ago on a monthly basis, which you should have three months of data on that already.
Then I forwarded that to Pam Hill.
Right, or her, yeah.
Yes, and actually, I spoke with a lineman who I knew from West Brookfield, and he was asking, he, he asked if you guys could do cross streets. There are some that are difficult for them to identify.
They gotta say they worked pretty quick, because I had this list start done for me over the weekend. I communicated with one of our officers on the night, I think Sunday, and I just drove around tonight before the meeting. And the one we talked about on Ames Road, by Dr. King's, that's on, Commercial Drive's on, the ones that were capped. There's about seven of them he gave me. They're almost all on, except for this one right here in the corner. So it works rather quick to put them back on.
Yeah.
Any issues we had, or ones that were out.
Were they out because of failure, or?
Well, some have been red capped, which.
We were not sure why they were red capped.
Commercial and the, and then Memorial Park, they control the road out there.
That was gonna ask you, right at the corner of Memorial Park, over by the gate?
But we get into, and I think it's kinda the question I brought up last week, or the option, if you will. We can put more on, and that's gonna up, really up our charge for electricity. However, and this is what I brought to Bob before, I think at the ARPA meeting, if we use some of our money to buy the hardware, then we're just paying for the electricity. And you can add on a lot more lights, because we're not paying for the rental fee, which is a pretty good component of our charge. So I think if Bob was gonna investigate, hey, if we buy out our license, then buying a new one is this much instead of like renting, you might be able to say, you know what, I could add a hundred lights, and still the bill is less than we were paying before, because we're not renting the hardware. And I think if Bob got back to the board, where the, A, you were confirming, yes, we can do this with that money. And B, if Pam got a purchase price, if you will, from Pam Hill, look, if we ended up wanting to buy out the hardware and just paying for the electricity, how much would that drop our bill, and how much do we have to pay?
How many street?
That might take care of a lot of the ones you're talking about there.
We, we had derived a list of new ones, just totally new ones.
Right.
There was about fifteen of them that were, that were in those intersection, basically the sessions area, stuff like that, you know?
I'm just questioning if we buy out those streetlights, what are we looking at for a cost there?
Well, as I said, you know, we get a quote from them.
The ARPA committee discussed that briefly, and I was asked to look into it, see, A, if we can use ARPA funds, and B, what, what are the costs, so.
Now, another thought I had, and I'd bounce it up about that, we have a casino money. That I think we've encumbered about half of it between the sign and the crosswalk. If we were to say that we need to light the traffic lane that was identified by the mitigation fund, it seems like we should be able to buy out those lights against the casino money, because it's part of the traffic lane. And that might reduce the impact on ARPA's wall. And I mentioned Bobby might check with Mary Thurlow, and see if they would consider that to be appropriate use, because right now, that one's been about maybe a few birds. Yeah. We spent, I mean, the crosswalk's gonna be this much.
Oh, yeah, but it was twenty-three thousand dollars for the portable digital radar device. And double that for the crosswalk, so we're gonna have in the range of forty to fifty thousand dollars right now, uncommitted.
Right. So if they allow us to say, okay, buying up Main Street, Allen Street, Summers, the ones that they, they said, yes, these are travel lanes for casino traffic. My gosh, knock off, you know, order the lights right there, because that's actually the heavy, you know, Allen Street, Main Street, where you have a light every second. Oh.
I can see that financial cost to buy that out in those areas. That's what you're saying? You wanna see that financial?
Exactly right, so if some is paid by ARPA and somebody got a casino, then we bought all the lights without impacting the tax rate. And now we reduce the street lighting budget, or the streetlight budget just goes towards rent, electricity costs. We might be able to take on quite a bit more in lights, because now you're not paying for it. Oh, I'm renting the bowl, I'm renting the stand, stuff like that. The one concern, I think Bobby did mention, what's the part of maintenance? Because part of this, so what would they charge me when they come out to replace a bowl? Or do we get a, a wait for the highway department to do it themselves?
In five years, when LEDs become more efficient, are we behind the game? Because we have to buy out the lights again?
On the LEDs?
Yeah.
Depends, I mean, these were supposed to be, you know, DPU, because we had to get them certified to the state. We're saying this was a fifteen to twenty-year technology, they're putting it now.
A lot of towns are doing it, so I'm sure it makes some, some financial sense. And I can get some answers early in the next year as to whether we can use ARPA, whether we can use handling money, and what the cost would be for Summers and Allen, and also for the rest of, of the town. And it's gonna take a while, by the way. The, the power companies are not enthusiastic about this, so they, they take it slow. Great, so we got some direction there. General bylaw change, filling the vacancies, that's the figure. You should have a copy of what you submitted a number of months ago, actually, back then. So this would be, I wanna put this on the town meeting warrant when we get there. And this would just have a procedure for filling vacancies of elected and appointed boards. And would be that we'd all meet together, elected boards would all meet together once, once the interview people. Since everyone, the appointed board is still filled in the same way they do now, you know, whoever appoints or just appoints. When it pertains to the elected boards. As it's done in most towns, around that they, 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 they meet jointly, they interview the people, and they meet jointly, they vote on it. First towns. Orbrook, Wolverhampton, Long Meadow. They'd be jointly, they'd interview the people, and they decide.
You say that, you, you're talking about the, the part, the.
Yeah, the selectmen or the planning board, or the, whatever, you know, whatever board is elected or. It's just, just an efficiency thing, and they.
Now, just to play devil's advocate, do you feel this is an overreach to have, and then everybody's?
Election process. First of all, law requires us to have a candidate. We have to vote. You know, if it's an elected board, the selectmen have to vote with the remaining people on the elected board to select the person. So we have a vote. So why can't we be involved in the interview process like we normal?
Why can't? No, I can't.
Because the way it's been before, they bring us a recommendation, we have to.
My point is, yes, the law says we must do it this way. It doesn't say you have to be interviewing. But if we went to a board, and we've had newer boards with vacancies in the past three, four years, and we went to these things, with the cooperation I think we have, we would never have an issue with being present and interviewing those candidates.
Well, we.
Just to talk about the other, this has only come up since the planning. Yes, we had parks with vacancies, we had accessories with vacancies, we've had, and the board has never cared to insert themselves into the elected board's process.
But we're not inserting ourselves, what we're, what we're doing is, we are fulfilling our obligation of the statute, which is to participate in the election of the person, of a, of a, of a person. And to do that, we should be able to interview the people.
Go meet.
We would have to post the meeting.
Right.
As like, so, so you're talking about the same thing. Why is it so, and why is it so onerous to have a procedure?
I think it's micromanaging. I think we're micromanaging elected boards that are gonna let them do their function.
So their function is to nominate someone and bring it to us.
Sure. They'll interview them based on what their, their job is.
Why do you think every, why do you think so many other, other towns do it? I think we have a tendency here to be afraid of the other boards, rather than fulfilling our obligation.
You showed, and you did great research, you showed a list of fifteen to twenty towns out of the three hundred and fifty in Massachusetts.
Well, I mean, I didn't call everybody, if I could do that, I suppose.
Redial your mask, but, you know, I appreciate your effort in this. My personal thing is, I think it's micromanaging. That's my personal take.
But John, the statute says.
The statute, you're talking to the MGL?
Yeah, the statute says that the board of selectmen and the remaining members of the board meet to select the person.
Meet to jointly appoint the person.
Jointly appoint the person.
They're saying, in your opinion, let me paraphrase, you don't feel we can correctly do that if we haven't seen the other people that they showed?
Correct, correct.
And I'm saying to you, fine, let's put a memo out, hey, if you're having interviews, we'd like to be invited to those interviews. Rather than making a bylaw requiring you. Because then you're coming down like you are over. I know you're elected board, but we're gonna tell you what to do. And I don't think that's appropriate.
I won't be telling them what to do, but.
And John, don't interview anybody without us coming to see them.
Why not? What, what's wrong with that? Let's see, we have a vote. We have, we have an equal vote that they have. We would, you know.
We have an equal vote, so if we reference the, the planning board case, they brought their candidates to us, and we have the option to not vote for their candidates.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's still having a say in who they bring, so I mean, if, say, our board was opposed to a candidate, we could vote no. And then they have to go back to the pool, right?
Well, no, they would have, in most cases, the boards have more votes than we do. And the planning board is five, the parks and that's five.
Yeah.
I mean, it was unusual that there'd be two vacancies.
I mean, it'd still be four to three.
I go back to when we, when this was presented the first time, I think, if I recall correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, we had talked about putting this off.
To the town meeting.
To the town meeting. And I don't think, I mean, I, I think there was opposition to it then, but I think we all agreed that we could put it off to the town meeting, so.
Well.
So that's what I'm saying, now we'll put this on the town meeting, yeah.
Right, now, let's be fair, in the general bylaws, part of the general bylaws is you cannot modify the general bylaws except at an annual town meeting.
Right.
So it couldn't have been considered a special town meeting. But I did say that, to be fair. Don said, okay, if I put it off, fine, so I certainly endorse his right to bring forth the warrant art. I may not support personally, but I support his right to.
We, I think, yeah, I think we agreed to allow this to be presented at the next town meeting, annual town meeting.
Okay, so we'll do that.
We'll call the Devon.
All right. Uh, the next.
Put the excavator back on, right? That was the.
The excavator's going well.
Like Congress. Move the highway in my town. Who was it, Senator Bird, that had more federal buildings in West Virginia than any other state?
And the rivers too, with South Carolina and the House.
Yeah.
They said it was, he was in Tidewater, and said it, they would all sink if you got any more federal installation there. Holiday schedule compensation issue.
The way it's written, it's their scheduled day prior, so they might not work on Thursday, but if they worked on Friday. Now, this board had also said, I think last year, Dan, it's been a hard year, give them a full payday off. That was when Christmas was during the work week, not on a Saturday.
Right.
Not to say, but I think we bounced it off the deck here. We are not talking huge money. Same thing, our employees have been through a hard time. Are we willing to, as a thing, say, look, have another, have a full payday off instead of that half day? You know, for the town.
I, I actually reached out to Dick and actually had him crunch the numbers for me. And we have thirty-six full-time employees. Sixteen are under union contracts, so they are already made with the union's offering. So that leaves, we have twelve employees that already work Fridays, so they're gonna get the half day on Friday. Just going off payroll. We have eight employees that don't work Fridays.
My secretary works Friday.
Yeah.
One.
But if that's not their scheduled day, that's not the day the council agreed it.
Correct. So if you break down the payroll, payroll for one day is thirteen hundred and forty-four dollars, forty-six. Correct, so, if you break down the payroll, payroll for one day is thirteen hundred and forty-four dollars, forty-six cents.
We're talking half of that.
So you're talking half of that, so you were looking at six hundred and seventy-two dollars. So. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with boosting morale, giving, giving our employees the half day.
So they're gonna be working, so the, so the town hall's gonna be closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Half day.
So they're gonna work two hours on, on Thursday. Because most only work four hours in town hall a day.
They get paid for half a day on it. They get paid for half a day either.
Of their scheduled day prior to the holiday.
Prior to the holiday, yeah, so if they don't work Friday.
That's not what it says.
It does, oh yeah.
It says to get paid for the holiday, you have to work the scheduled day.
Right, and we're saying, okay, now, after we're giving you that, and you've right, that's the regular holiday, except the half-day Christmas is on top of that as well, so you would have to work the half of that half-day, sorry, if you're scheduled eight to four, let's throw the eight to four, you get the twelve to four off, because that's the half-day prior. You would have to work the eight to twelve to qualify for the half and the full, right? Because you would have to work that, we're saying, fine, you don't have to. I would, however, put the caveat in, put the day before, yes, that becomes the required day off, they must work.
That's the statement.
But we'll cover the other half day of that, half day before. And I, I go back to Craig, and some people might say, yeah, but Christmas is already on a Saturday, they already got this, that, and this. We're not talking big money, we got people who have given a lot in the past couple of years, I mean, Don, you were pushing the incentive thing, which is not wrong either, it's a little good for everybody.
Is there a motion?
Scrooge, come on.
So we need to move to make a motion to pay our employees half day of their scheduled day before Christmas.
Well. Here's another, okay, we're not making the change from here, this is just Christmas.
Just Christmas.
Right, I'll make a motion to amend the pay period from the half-day prior to Christmas to a full day prior to Christmas, subject to the same requirement that the day before must be worked. For this, for the calendar year twenty twenty-one, the half-day prior shall be a full day paid for the year twenty twenty-one.
It's that new?
So then, in the policy, in the policy, you get paid Christmas, plus a half day before.
Yeah.
Changing that to a full day before, subject to the same requirement that you must work the day prior.
So they get the whole day, so.
That's what we're talking about, it's the half, from the half to the full.
This will apply across the board, so, let me just, just so I understand this. They have to work Wednesday, then they get Thursday off base.
Yes.
And Friday.
Instead of half a Thursday, Friday is their payday for the holiday basis, that's how, at my place.
So you want to amend it from half a day, paid.
Right, but there's the Christmas, the Christmas half-day shall be changed.
So the town hall will be closed Thursday, and closed Friday. Right, because it's always closed Friday, and what about the highway people and the?
Their contract is, well, at least all of them.
Do they have their own contract?
They're bound by a union contract.
Yeah, they have to open up the contract.
And the senior center people?
They're paid employees like ours.
It's only by not bound by contract, which was twelve. Sixteen, sixteen people. Can you remake your motion, so I can hear you?
Please, roll the table. Make a motion to change the paid half-day holiday prior to Christmas for the calendar year twenty twenty-one to a full day, subject to all the requirements in the handbook.
Second.
Go in favor.
Aye.
I abstain.
Whoa. Is Harper three sizes too big?
I could vote no, I could say that to no.
Next. I'm telling me, we got invited.
Oh yeah, we got run, June, uh, June.
June.
Well, that's, no, that's actually not wrong when the state budget finally comes out.
Yeah, January, January, who is it, twenty-second, is only good?
That's a Saturday.
So it's not that big?
No. I got, no, twenty-fifth is a contract.
I don't know, they've invited us to, I don't know what day.
All right.
Let's see, like, January something, you know, second, January, the usual roundtable type thing.
Where they know nothing and what's the shit together.
Well, actually, actually, I think this was a little bit different, we don't have a copy of that letter? From Bob Tempe?
Well, that's, yeah, you talked about that, but.
I.
I will tell you from the standpoint, all I can tell you is we are not close.
And the negotiations. All right, we'll go to the roundtable.
Yeah.
That's, it's like the second one, or something like that. Yeah. Guess that's it, executive session to consider.
Well, I'll give you.
Oh yeah, yeah, but it.
As you know, kind of a slow month, you know, so, board meetings have been congratulating people on holiday, see a way as they're gonna hang up job, and planning director office.
No news on this one.
So your strategic planning meeting.
It's getting interesting, it's open to public view now, public meeting logs present.
Did they, they zoomed it, right?
They zoomed it, they actually had
Really?
two breakout sessions, and they zoomed both of them.
Is the tape online?
That I don't know.
Okay.
They, they had the Zoom links in there, they were broadcasting, somebody was there from Wolverhampton Public Access recording. Yeah, I thought it was a bit more well-organized, a bit more structured, a little bit better, I'm still some bugs to work out. Before, we got home.
Administrative report.
Okay, capital planning met on the fourteenth, that Clavett was chosen as interim chair. Had some interesting discussions. Emergency management committee also met on the fifteenth, we reviewed mostly planning for the coming winter. ARPA committee held its first meeting. We distributed the regulations, I don't have regulations yet from the Treasury Department for the infrastructure legislation, but that's where a lot of money is going to come our way, I believe, for road improvements and other infrastructure. It's gonna be a four billion state program also. The regional retirement board met today, we, we were involved with the number of public officials across the county urging that the retirement board select someone from the outside, which they did not do. We had a shared health meeting today to review a proposed bylaw. That's, with some changes are being made, but that basically is going to be final at the next session, we'll give it to the board of selection. Review. Also, we've identified a town office for Michelle Barrett, who is the new
Yeah, I wanted to hear that.
Veterans Service Officer.
Yeah.
Well, it got a little complicated now with the new shared health, the first.
Yeah, I heard that at the meeting, they had another office for.
That's right, well, it's the same office, it's, it's the former treasurer's office, so, we, we have some more work to do.
Oh.
Wasn't, wasn't they, didn't they have an office at the senior center, weren't they doing veterans things there?
She was doing things there, but no office per se, so she's just that.
Oh, she's in the same position.
I was kind of an office.
Half a desk.
And a nice window, window to the outside, no privacy.
Yeah, this is an announcement that just came out today from Aluch Water, they're involved with some important activity and other projects that they're doing, and so they've announced that Thursday, the twenty-third, is going to be like today. I also did something for your information. There's a typical day in the administrator's life. I decided to report what went on today, so.
He's done, you called seven times?
Well, those are the ones he answered.
Look at this, I feel bad for Bob.
And that's the.
Discussion with Selectman Flynn, Gavin Ford calls, visit. Good thing there are different times, that's the key.
Five of us.
We changed his phone number.
All right. Forty-one.
Just a quick, as you saw, the update, Alec is doing, you know, water main break in another community they had to fix first, and then come back and wrap this up, other than that, the project, John, very well.
And they have advised residents.
Yeah.
John, you got a very nice compliment from Helen Sullivan, I believe is her last name, she had called at the end of last week and had brown water, and was pretty disturbed, so when I called, she said, I spoke to a man from the water district, and he was very nice, so.
Just give credit to, yeah, John Plaster and Bob Flag are doing a lot of that, like, work out there, using their customers in their districts.
Okay. Motion to go into executive session to consider the purchase exchange use for valuable real property. Then, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to negotiating position.
Chair, make a motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated by the chair without a return to open session.
Thanks.